Hi Gloria.
Hi Steve.
Hey Marcia.
Hello John, hello Craig.
Hi John, Gloria.
Hello.
In a couple of days I'll be standing at that real view that's behind you Craig.
Cool, well that's exciting.
Yeah, I haven't been there in a while.
Are you a hiker?
Uh, I am a hiker, I'm not backpacking, I'm just staying somewhere in there, but I am, yes. I used to work there.
No kidding?
That's where my wife and I met.
Well that's fun.
Yeah. 1979.
Cool.
Were you with the Forest Service?
Uh, Park Service.
Park Service?
Yeah.
No kidding.
We got engaged on top of Half Dome.
Cool.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a, that's a pretty out there, you know, place that not very many people are gonna duplicate.
Yeah, had to carry a ring all the way up there too. That was in the old days before you needed a permit or anything.
Okay, it is six o'clock. So, I am going to welcome everyone to the Maraga Fire District, the regular board meeting September 15th, 2021. We're gonna have a six o'clock closed session, a 6:45 to seven special board meeting, and then the 7:00 PM open session. So, on item one, opening ceremonies, I will call the meeting to order. Marcia, can you please give us a roll call?
Director Bates.
Here.
Director Dan Ziger.
Here.
Director Donner is absent. Director Jex.
Here.
President Jorgan.
Here. Thank you. So, item 2.0, open for public comment for things that are not on the closed agenda items 3.1 through 3.3.
We do not have any attendees and we've not received any written public comment.
Okay, so I will close the public comment period. And then we will adjourn this session and have a 6:45 special meeting and then seven o'clock we'll open the regular meeting, the open session at that point. And all you, on the other, the other link.
Okay, can you just say something, at 6:45 we go back to, to this, to this regular meeting, right?
Correct.
Okay, alright.
And then we will open the special meeting up at 6:45, have that meeting, we'll adjourn that meeting, and then reconvene the regular meeting at 7.
Okay, got it.
Great, thank you.
Alright, see ya.
Chief, they've adjourned to closed session.
Yeah, I'm trying to get there.
Hi Marcia.
Hi there.
Hi.
So it is. So I'm going to call the special meeting to order if we can. Marcia, do we need another slide here? Okay, so welcome to the Marag.
Sorry, my mouse is. As a mind. Yes, there we go.
Okay, welcome to the Maragorina Fire District Regular Board Meeting September fifteenth, twenty twenty one. Actually, I think we're kind of on to the next one. We're actually having a special meeting first. We did all that. Keep going. Okay, so welcome to the Maragorina Fire District Special Board Meeting from September fifteenth, twenty twenty one at six forty five P M. And I will call the meeting to order, given that it's six forty seven.
Director Bates?
Here.
Director Dan Ziger?
Here.
Director Donner is absent. Director Dex?
Here.
President Jorgens?
Here. Thank you, Marcia. Okay, do we have any public comment on items that are not on the special meeting agenda?
We do not have any hands raised and we have not received any written public comment.
Okay, so I will close the public comment period then. And we can move on to item three point one. Dot resolution twenty one dash sixteen identifying the terms and conditions for fire department emergency response away from their official duty station and assigned to an emergency incident.
Good evening, directors. Each year personnel from the district are deployed on mutual aid assignments in particip- as participating members of the California Fire Service and Rescue Emergency Mutual Aid System. The California Fire Assistance Agreement, otherwise known as the CFAA or the Five Party Agreement, is the negotiated reimbursement mechanism for local government fire agency responses under the mutual aid system. Reimbursement from the state of California is based on established pay scales and MOU language called pass through pay. In an effort to ensure agencies are fully reimbursed in a timely manner, the state has asked each agency to provide a resolution that covers any and all response employees whom are eligible for pass through pay with or without MOU language. Authorizing portal to portal pay for employees ensures the district will continue to be eligible for full reimbursement to the CFAA. The attached resolution updates resolution fifteen dash oh seven adopted in April two thousand and fifteen. And it updates it to add members of the fire prevention staff. Staff has identified opportunities to deploy these members to non-fire line, non-fire line support positions on major incidents to fill positions such as base camp radio operator, damage inspection specialist, damage inspection manager, and other CICCs positions. District benefits from limited fire prevention staff deployments in the following ways. One, increased understanding of fire behavior resulting in better inspection of fire safety information sharing. Increased retention of these members through career developing deployment opportunities and development of large scale instance specific support skills and experience which can be leveraged in the event of a major fire in our area. Understanding the many requirements that on our limited fire prevention staff, we will carefully balance core in district job requirements with deployment opportunities to ensure fire prevention goals are achieved. There is no cost to the district as OAS reimburses all salary and benefits expenses in addition to an administrative fee. As a note of elements that we have seen demand for this year included things such as radio operators and communications technicians where folks are able to get out and learn how to manage and net control on major incidents with complex use of NISTI and other non-sta- or non-regularly used radio channels that would certainly be called into service during an event here. We think this is an excellent opportunity to gain experience, to support the mutual aid system and to increase the desirability of our fire prevention positions as a way to not only retain those folks we have, but to help in the recruitment in the event of future vacancies. I'd be happy to answer any just any questions from the board or the public.
So I'll open it up to public comment first, I guess.
We have not received any written public comment. We do not have any hands raised.
Okay, so then I'll close the public comment and we'll open it to board time and questions.
I don't have any questions. I just think it's a it's a good idea that we we do this. Thank you to staff to bringing this up. I guess I guess it wasn't clear in the past, so it's good to to codify it.
Seems like a good plan to me.
Yeah. I agree. Well. Get ahead, sorry.
Do we hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution twenty one dare sixteen.
I will second that motion.
Okay, Marcia.
Director Bates?
Hi.
Director Dan Ziger?
Hi.
Director Dex?
Hi.
President Jorgens?
Hi. Okay, a motion passes. Thank you. And I guess we can adjourn this meeting and come back together on this same channel at seven o'clock for our regularly scheduled meeting then.
Can we just leave it up or should we leave?
Or you can certainly leave it up and we can, yeah, we can all leave it up. It's just that we're gonna, we we can't do any business for the next eight minutes.
We do need a, we do need a motion to adjourn this meeting, the special meeting.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Director Bates? Director Bates?
I think he might have already moved now, but we still have a quorum, so we're good.
Director Dan Ziger?
Hi.
Director Dex?
Hi.
And President Jorgens?
Hi. Okay, the meeting, this meeting, the special meeting is adjourned. We'll see everybody at seven o'clock.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, it is seven o'clock. Let's see who's here. We got John, Craig, Steve, maybe. Greg, are you here?
Yes, I'm here.
Good. Okay, so let's call the meeting. I'll reconvene the regular meeting and call the meeting to order. And can we, Marcia, have another roll call, please?
Director Bates?
Here.
Director Dan Ziger?
Here.
Director Donner is absent. Director Dex?
Here.
President Jorgens?
Here. Okay. So. The next item in the meeting is the report from the closed section session. We did not have any anything to report from the closed session. So on item six, I'll open for public comment any items that are not on the agenda tonight.
We have two hands raised. Jonathan Goodwin.
Good evening to everyone. I hope you're well. In a few weeks, we'll have the thirtieth anniversary of the tunnel fire. Just thought I'd bring that up. And just after the tunnel fire, you may or may not be aware, city of Berkeley got a million plus dollars from a FEMA grant to clear a bunch of vegetation, which they did and which all grew back within a few years. Also, during that period of time, just following the tunnel fire, people up on Panoramic Hill, which is way up above the Cal Stadium, extremely dangerous place to be in a in a rapacious fire. They held their own evacuation exercise, first one ever done in the East Bay with no agencies were involved. They did it themselves. And they have had a long and productive collaborative relationship with the Berkeley Fire Department since that time. They have worked out, you know, at the beginning, you know, no one knew what they were doing and as it were, but you know, everyone was doing the best they could. But over these thirty thirty years, they've, you know, a lot's been done. And what I'm trying to do is put in a plug for collaborative approach to these sorts of things because that's what gives you a long term strategy rather than just doing a project and, you know, it all growing back. And I know MOFD has been doing things along these lines, but there's also been at least what appears to me to be a pattern of gunboat diplomacy, particularly with agencies. Very well documented in these meetings regarding Caltrans. It's going on with other agencies as well. And my suggestion to the board is that, you know, the senior staff will only be here for years. Those of us who live here are here in it for the long haul and having damaging relationships with agencies is is not something in the our best, the best interests of the residents who live here. And then the last thing I want to say is that the the approach that is going forward has no real honest, as far as I know, element of genuine collaboration with communities, with agencies in terms of discussing projects, determining projects. I asked about this in a previous meeting. Chief said they'll all be in accordance to page such and such on the CWPP. But that's leaves open a wide variety of things that are all decided by a unitary executive, you might say, with with very little collaboration with these other groups. And I want to suggest to the board, who presumably be living here for some time to come, that this is not the best way forward in terms of long term success. I'd ask you to just consider I ask you to just consider that element as time goes on and see how much of this sort of approach will will backfire in in due course, just as we've seen in recent history with other sort of military oriented operations. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Mark? Can you say, say who you are and welcome? You're on mute at the moment, Mark. Now you.
All right. My back?
You're back.
All right. Thank you, guys. Bear with me here. Good evening, everyone. My name is Mark McCullough. I'm a captain with the district and a labor representative. I'm here on behalf of our firefighters tonight to express our complete and utter disappointment with the labor negotiations process thus far. Despite the outpouring of community support for our firefighters and the superior service we provide, and despite our endless attempts to address every single concern brought forward by the district during these negotiations, we have seemingly made zero progress towards an agreement. This process seems to have been a waste of time and of taxpayer dollars. Throughout this process, we have remained hopeful that the elected representatives of this district would start taking this process seriously. Your firefighters are committed to acting in the best interests of the community and public safety. And we hope that this board has that same commitment. We look forward to the district putting forth a good faith effort as long as negotiations are able to continue. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
That concludes our hands raised and we do not have any written public comments.
Okay. So since there's no further public comment, I'll close the public commentary for items that are not on the agenda. And then we'll go on to the consent agenda, items 7.1 through 7.5. Do we have any public comment on those items?
We do not have any hands raised and we've not received any written public comment.
Okay, so I will close the public comment period on those. Do we have any board comment on those or questions? And if not, do I hear a motion to approve the?
Will we approve the consent agenda? Second.
Marcia?
Director Bates?
Aye.
Director Dan Ziger?
Aye.
Director Dex?
Aye.
President Jorgens?
Aye. The consent agenda is approved. So regular agenda item 8.1 draft GSB 75 OPEV valuation report as of June 30, 2021, and approval of OPEV funding policy.
Directors, this was a late arriving item that was published this afternoon. I would recommend pulling this item and either scheduling a special meeting to discuss in advance of the October meeting or discussing and adopting or considering adoption at the regular October meeting.
Do I hear a motion to pull this?
So moved.
I hear a second. That was a second from John. Okay, Marcia.
Sorry. Just a question. Do we still, we still have to open it to the public?
I don't think you have to open it to the public if you're removing it from the agenda.
Okay, I'm just asking.
But I'll leave that to.
Oh, you don't need to open it. Okay.
Okay, so we were in the middle of a vote, I think.
Yeah.
We have a motion by Dan Ziger and seconded by Director Dex, Director Bates?
Aye.
Director Dan Ziger?
Aye.
Director Dex?
Aye.
President Jorgens?
Aye. Okay, we'll put that on the October agenda. Thank you. Okay, so we're through with eight one. Sorry, now we're on to eight two, which is post employment benefit trust services options and asset allocations.
Good evening, directors. The district contracts for public agency retirement services for post employment benefits trust services. PARs provides an IRS section 115 approved irrevocable trust for the district to use to fund other post employment benefits and to fund a pension rate stabilization trust fund. At the August 18th, 2021 board meeting, the board directed staff to inquire with PARs regarding the fees and asset allocations. On January 18th, 2017, the board adopted resolution 17-05 approving the adoption of a public agency's post employment benefits trust and authorized execution of an agreement for administrative services included as attachment A. Per the agreement, fees for funds under $10 million are 0.5%, falling to 0.4% for funds that exceed $10 million. The district's current balance is 8.5 million and budgeted contributions will increase this balance above the $10 million threshold in the current fiscal year, thus reducing fees to 0.4%. Below you see performances to date for the OPEV trust and the pension stabilization trust funds. Per the agreement, the fee structure as outlined in attachment A is falls to 0.2% over time if the district's funds exceed $50 million. The board direction staff contacted PARs regarding the fees. The response provided is that PARs offers a multi tiered fee schedule provides the agencies with lower fees every $5 million, up to $50 million plus. Once a client exceeds $50 million in assets, PARs would review the next level for possible future reductions. PARs provided a current fee schedule that reflects no changes in fees, attachment B. PARs offers two platforms. One is the district's current platform through Highmark Capital, the registered investment advisor, and they're responsible for fiduciary liability to manage the district investments. This platform allows the district to determine the target rate of return, risk tolerance level, and choice of active, passive, or custom investments. There's also a directed trustee option. This option would allow the district to self direct investments or choose a different registered investment advisor other than Highmark Capital. In this case, the district will be responsible for the fiduciary liability. PARs indicated they have 430 clients using their section 115 trust and fewer than 10 are using the directed trustee platform because most government agencies seek the input of an external advisor and do not want to assume the fiduciary liability. Highmark Capital Management Incorporated is a registered investment advisor with the Securities and Exchange Commission. Registered investment advisors have a fiduciary duty to their clients and are regulated by the SEC. As public agency, the district has the following trust fund investment options for both OPEV and pension rate stabilization funds. The fees are included after each option, and these five options are presented for the board's consideration. Option one is to continue using the PARs discretionary trustee platform with our current 5% rate reduced to 0.4% this year when, if, as expected, we exceed $10 million in assets. Section option is to use a PARs directed trustee platform. The district would assume fiduciary responsibility and our fees would be 0.3% decreasing to 0.25. Another option is to transfer the district's funds to CalPERS, who has a 0.1% fee. There are significant differences between the existing trust fund provided by PARs and CalPERS, and this is discussed in more detail in the following pages. The district could also attempt to establish its own section 115 irrevocable trust. This would be complex and would likely take significant time and legal fees to establish the trust and obtain an IRS private letter ruling. In addition, the district would likely need to obtain an investment professional to invest the money, and the district would assume fiduciary responsibility. And option five would be the district could issue an RFP and solicit bids from other companies that provide similar services. Below, we see a number of options for the pension trust fund. First one is continue to use PARs with the same rate structure. Second would be to use a PARs directed trustee platform, which is the same as for OPEV. There is a option to transfer the district's funds to CalPERS. CalPERS, in this case, charges a 0.25% rate. And as discussed below, there are significant differences between our current PAR structure and CalPERS. Option four, specific to pension stabilization trust funds. Funds can be transferred to the Contra Costa County Employees Retirement Association. They charge no fee. However, these contributions will be managed by Cessara outside of the district's control. And as above, the district could attempt to establish our own section 115 irrevocable trust with the same legal, the time and legal fees to establish this trust and obtain the private letter ruling, or the district could issue an RFP to solicit bids from other companies. It is worth noting that MOFD staff does not have the professional investment management expertise to manage a section 115 trust. And selecting this option includes the critical caveat that such a self managed trust would require the district to assume fiduciary responsibility and require the board to provide very specific direction with regard to investment decisions and long term strategy. It is estimated that establishing such a trust would be a one time cost of $50,000 to $100,000. Below you see a comparison, the PARs trust and the CalPERS trust for the different options. And then next, we have a discussion of asset allocation. In February of 2017, the board authorized investment of the OPEV and pension trust funds in the PARs passively managed capital appreciation portfolio and approved the investment guidelines documents included as attachment D. The investment guidelines documents authorize the following strategic asset allocation. Cash at 0 to 20%, fixed income at 10 to 30%, and equity at 65 to 85%. According to the GFOA best practices for asset allocation for defined benefit plans, diversifying an investment portfolio by including asset categories with investment returns that increase or decrease under different market conditions can protect the defined benefit plan against significant investment losses. The GFOA reprimands the portfolio be diversified among various asset categories. At June 30, 2020, the district's OPEV plan was 12% funded. The district's pension plan was 87% funded. Decreasing the cash and fixed income ranges would result in increasing the equity range and increase risk and volatility. Highmark provided an analysis report that assumes a 100% equity allocated portfolio included as attachment E. Based on the report, the expected return is 7.35, which is an increase of 0.71% above the current estimate of 6.64. The volatility of the district's portfolio would also increase to 16.69% from the current volatility estimate of 12.53. To summarize, if the district changes the portfolio to 100% equities, the expected rate of return would increase 0.71% and volatility would increase 4.16%. Staff requests board direction regarding the asset allocations for the OPEV and pension trust plans. If the board would like to change asset allocation, the next step would be to bring an updated investment guidelines document to the next meeting for approval. Under long term goals, the OPEV and pension stabilization trust funds were established to pay down unfunded liabilities and hedge against future pension rate volatility. While this goal remains unchanged, specific guidance for their use has not been established. While board direction regarding a full actuarially recommended contributions remains unchanged, staff is seeking board direction regarding the threshold at which contribution should be replaced by earnings and criteria for accessing OPEV and pension stabilization trust funds in out years.
Okay, so I guess we need to open that concept up to public comment.
We have one hand raised. Mark Dewey.
Welcome, Mark.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Great. Thanks for taking my comments now two, two months in a row. And thank you, chief, for researching the topic. I question if we're using the best characterization for our pension stabilization fund and question its portfolio. It's it's called a stabilization fund. And like the chief just said, quote, "a hedge against future pension rate volatility." But when we have a market correction and Cessara loses money, that causes our Cessara rates to spike. We'll have a similar impact in our stabilization fund due to that correction because both the funds have a very similar asset allocation. In my opinion, that's not really a hedge. And I'm not sure because of the similar negative impact on both accounts, how that offers us much stabilization. I'm, I agree, having more money set aside generally makes things more stable. But it's really the record levels of cash we have in our general reserve that makes our finances stable, not this, the extra pension trust account. Activating this pension stabilization account is just going to transfer money that just got hit from a market correction from one account into another account. That's invested into almost the same asset allocation. So I'm not, I'm not sure if stabilizing is is the right, the right word. I am in favor of having additional pension funding investment accounts. I just think there needs to be characterized differently and needs to be invested into something where we're expecting a greater rate of return than Cessara can get us. And I think that probably means going towards 100% equities or close to that in minimizing fees. Now, I'm obviously a risk tolerant person. I probably couldn't have become a firefighter if I wasn't comfortable with risk. And I acknowledge other people may be risk adverse and have valid reasons to be so. I just think this is part of our financial picture where we should take and accept the risk reward scenario and embrace the volatility. And in closing, we're at a situation now where Cessara thinks they're going to get 7% on our pension money. And we have our model based more conservatively because we don't believe they're going to get that 7% to to six and a quarter. But we're now setting aside money in a trust account and paying Highmark Capital to get us an expected 6.14. I know, we feel like we have control over that money, but really the only thing we could do with the money that's in the trust is give it to Cessara. And if our own expectations are that Cessara is going to out earn Highmark, then you have to ask why we wouldn't just give Cessara all of the money. And with that, I'll save the rest of my time for any back and forth. Thanks for taking my comment.
Thank you, Mark. Marcia, do we have any other?
We do not have any other hands raised and we've not received any written public comment.
Okay, thank you. So now I'll open it up to board discussion. Nobody has any questions? I do if nobody else does.
Why don't you start us off, Craig?
I just was trying to let everybody else start first. So chief, do we have a choice of, because I, I think I again agree with a bunch of what Mark said. The you know, this is money, you know, our general fund can come and go depending, you know, the balances, the extra balances we have with you know, extra capital expenditures we may have or all kinds of things. And, you know, we are, so I think the the general fund balance that we have and it can change with property tax revenue bumps, which has in the past. So the reason we have this fund is to, you know, not too many years ago, we, I think our pension costs almost doubled in one year. And so that's a big spike and our general fund would have had a big problem dealing with that, I believe. So that's the reason we have this, and it might be named inappropriately, but the point is it's it's a dedicated reserve for this specific thing. But then the question is what to do with it? I think we all agree that we like it and it's a good thing to have. For me, you know, Cessara has money invested in bonds and invested in cash, invested left in cash. And they earn effectively zero these days. You know, that's sort of the what I'll call old school theory of having your portfolio diversified. And they do have, however, you know, monthly payments are however often they make payments to people, they know there's cash that comes out on a regular basis and cash that was in on a regular basis for them. So there are some reasons for them to have some cash lingering around. As Mark pointed out last time, our fund hopefully is not planning on paying things in and out on a regular basis. It's more the kind of the rainy day fund or the, you know, Cessara screws up and we need money fund. And so I think we, that would for me mean that we could have a longer term view of our needs. And that says that investing more heavily in equities and less in bonds and less and none in cash is a fine thing to do is because the only risk you have is the day you need to take the money out, you know, the market might be down and you're kicking it out at an unattractive rate, but things happen. So I think we're hoping that we would have a long enough view that that wouldn't be an issue. So for me, putting it into, you know, the S and P 500, as I've pointed out, and I think every one of these meetings we get from our pension managers, they have underperformed the S and P 500, as far as I know, every year. And and I doubt that they're actually much more stable than the S and P 500. It's an incredibly diversified portfolio that, you know, it's the 500 largest companies roughly in the US. They all almost by definition have overseas assets. They have many different industries. They, you know, it's a very diversified portfolio. So I would be in favor of if our Highmark folks let us tell them not to invest in bonds and not to invest in cash, that we would have them be, I'll call it more aggressive than we currently do, but I'm not sure if that's one of their customizable flavors or not.
Yes, sir. And before I hand Glor and the question about cash fixed income and equity asset allocation ranges, I would like to point out that just one nuance with the accessing the pension stabilization trust fund or whatever the appropriate naming convention. Cessara smooths losses over five years. So when we see the impact of market correction or a significant downturn with regard to pension rates, the full impact that is spread out over several up to five years after the event. So depending on, obviously,
So depending on obviously any number of factors. There is likely to be some separation between the district's need to access. And then the event that caused the, that triggered the requirement to access. Gloria, can you answer the question with regard to adjustment of the strategic asset allocation ranges with high mark?
Yes. So right, so the board of twenty seventeen that they said that what the ranges are, so right, so if the board was to have more in equities than. We just would bring that back to the board and to adopt. And then high mark would implement it.
Because I, I had thought that I, and again, it's been a number of years, but I thought they had sort of, you know, the small, medium and large versions, you could be the. Less risky, the medium risky and the more risky, and we were in the more risky group already. And you're saying that we can customize it even more than that?
So you're right, we are, there were five different options and we are in the most aggressive, which is the capital appreciation. So, but I believe that we can also change the ranges, the percentages to do more, you know, I think we could say, you know, if the board wanted to say more equity, you could say more equity.
Okay, so you can bring that concept back to us. Next time or whenever and we can see what the very, the variability that that could be.
This is Director Jax, I, I think when high mark was there and we were talking about this couple of months back. Looking at their performance for the period. That, you know, you have almost thirty five percent of the portfolio earning zero. It doesn't make a lot of sense, particularly where you, I think. Particularly with a small difference in volatility. You could have almost a hundred percent in equities. And, and return a higher percent. The other issue is that, you know, the other thing in terms of the development of the fund. Was the fact that there was a substantial unfunded pension liability that we were concerned about or the previous boards when they were talking about this. Were concerned about. Of providing for that funding over a normal period of time because of the fact that. Service had not returned. And their expectations in terms of what they were using for discounting. They never realized. Over a period of years. And therefore we felt we could do better than they did.
And, and have we?
There's. I, 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 I don't know exactly over the period of time. Because ours is relatively short, it's really only been mini fleet funded for the last. Four years. Period of time before that where Cyrus was estimating that they were going to earn seven percent and using a seven, seven and a half percent. Discount. And, you know, they never earned that. At that period of time. So that's what led basically to. Providing for the funding on this or, or, you know, you could end up in a situation. If there was a downturn or they didn't return or there was losses that occurred. That, you know, we could have a substantially increase in terms of the amount we'd have to contribute to the pension fund to fund it. And we would need to have the resources to do it and, and at that point in time. And even in the current point in time. Funded over a period of years, you, we could end up with a situation where you couldn't make the payment out of the. You know, or if, if something happened to the district, it's an issue.
So the, the way to think about it is in two thousand and. Three or whatever, whatever year it was that we took out our pension obligation bond. Three, four, five, whatever year it was, we had a fully funded, a hundred percent funded pension for Cesara. And since then, by definition, they have not earned what they said they were going to because we now have a deficit again. And it seems to me when we paid it off, it was when we put the money in the first place, it was about a twenty eight million dollar deficit. And once again, I think we're roughly in, in at least that big a hole again. Yeah, so the point is they, by definition, I mean, that's the only, that's. That is the definition of an unfinished pension liability is they haven't been earning their expected rate of return. And, and so we know they've been underperforming and as far as I know, ours has been doing at least as well as we anticipated it would. Now, it's been a really good market since we started investing money in our little fund. But part of the time it has, part of the time it wasn't. But because by definition, they are investing in things that, you know, they have a lot of bonds and they have a lot of. Cash. They sort of. Almost by definition can't earn as much because they have other, they have a shorter term timeframe in some respects than we do, at least on some of their portfolio than we do.
I, 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 yeah, I hear that and. I really, you know, we know what our rate of return was at least the past year, we know what. Calpers was this past year, I, I really don't know what Cesara was and. I would like to know that too, for perhaps for next time, if we don't make an agreement tonight.
Yeah, why, it sounds like we don't really have the. I, I think they're going to come back next time. If we want them to with a proposal of things, or at least with a menu of things we could choose next time. Is that right?
Yeah, I think that's what I would. We ought to do.
Well, and so maybe, maybe what, what the staff is looking for is some direction that didn't seem to me, and again. I'm just throwing out my opinion first. The other flavors of, you know, doing it ourselves with us being the fiduciaries is probably. You know, they're, you're. Ten out of four hundred or whatever did that and that because they probably don't want the personal liability or risk for doing it, which is pretty normal. Having cowper stew it or Cesara do it and us not have. Control over our money, I think is part of why we're doing it in the first place is because I think we weren't necessarily. We, we like having control, I think, I think local control is a good thing. So I think sticking with the guys we've got, but changing the portfolio allocation within their management would be better.
Yeah, you know, my, personally, my risk tolerance. With this taxpayer money is low personally, I'm just talking. I just feel it's my responsibility as a director. To take limited risk with this, with this and. You know, I, I'd have to really see a proposal because. I, I would, I'd probably be in favor of, of changing. The asset allocation somewhat, but I, I, I cannot, I couldn't support. A hundred percent in equities, I mean, I don't know if, if, if that's what I'm hearing here, but I, I, I wouldn't support that. But I could see some change in the asset allocation.
Well, the challenge with, with bonds right now is interest rates are at like a hundred year low.
I know.
And they kind of only have one way to go, they can't go down because they're already basic, the federal, from the federal government standpoint, they're at zero, so unless we're going to try to emulate Japan, which I don't think anybody wants to do. We know the, and when they go up. That when the, when the rates go up, the value of your bond goes down, so you lose money. And cash is just cash and it by definition earns zero. So. You know, it's, it's an interesting, and again, I think the last five years or so, people are finding that. The whole bond thing and yes, it lowers your, your volatility, volatility. But you can do it anytime you put it in zero things that don't go, you know, and, and, and interest rates have been constant for a long time, as soon as, since they only have one way to go. I'm not sure that those models actually work anymore, and I think the industry is figuring that out.
Yeah, the other thing is you're paying a fee for earning nothing.
You're going to do that, you can, you can put it in your own cash instead of having them put it in cash, you can leave it in cash and not pay the fee on.
That's true. And, and, and the reason. The reason for not letting Cesara invest our pension is because we have no control, I mean, is that the main reason?
Right. And they, they have historically done some things that. You know, they put a lot of money into, you know, foreign investments, for example, when you know, a hundred percent of our revenue and a hundred percent of our expenses have to do with US. They are local things even, right? You know, hedging it, it, it's one thing if you're, you know. A multinational company and thinking how to hedge your portfolio, that's one thing, but it's not completely obvious that at one point I think they had. What I considered a very large percentage of the portfolio in foreign stocks and it came back to bite them, I think. So, Chief, did, well, anybody? Greg, you want to make? Questions, comments?
No, my apologies, I had to step out and come back, so I missed most of that conversation, so I didn't want to weigh in. Too much.
So Chief, can we, can we have, can we see what the variables are for next time from, from our pars guys? Or Gloria and whoever wants to answer the question.
Chief, you're muted.
I'm sorry, I was just, I was reading my crystal ball for the market return for the next ten years, I, I hope no one will miss that. The, what is, I understand the direction, we will understand what is the, we will come back with what is the, the range of what is possible. Within the very asset allocation classes. And then provide the board an opportunity if they so choose to revisit. The, the district's priorities with regard to allocation of resources. Within the range of what's possible.
Exactly.
Could, could, can, can we also get? Added to that, can we also get? What Cesara's rate of return has been for the last, say, three years?
Yes, sir, for the last five years, two thousand sixteen, it was six point nine, two thousand seventeen, it was thirteen nine. Two thousand eighteen, it was a negative two seven, two thousand nineteen, it was fourteen six. Twenty twenty was nine point two, I'll forward the reports available on their website with information's available.
And how did that compare to what our returns were?
It, it's, at least for last year is a lot lower. I know that.
And again, really, really, you know, I, I didn't need to be tough on the Cesara folks. But because they do have a different set of needs than we do, you know, they, they have some more current. And they also have opportunities to invest in private equity and things that aren't even available to us.
Okay, oh, oh, or, am I hearing too, we're not interested in, in cowper's? I mean, their, their fees are a lot less.
I think there, my memory is that their rates of return look a lot like Cesara's.
Well. No, it's, it's higher, I, I mean, it's here in our report, I. I think last year, well, three years, theirs is eleven point seven, ours is thirteen point three.
That, that's per year, two percent a year makes up for a lot of point one percent fees.
Yeah, I mean.
On that, sort of make, that made, that made up, that two percent per year made up for ten years where the difference in fees in one year.
Really? Is that what it comes up to?
Yeah, I mean, there's a point two percent difference in our fees or point three percent, so a two percent. In one year makes up for six years and if you do it for three years, it makes, I mean, it's a, it's a big difference.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, Chief, do you have the direction you need?
I, I believe so, sir, thank you.
Okay, we can move on to. Item eight point three, the authorized general fund revenue and expenditure budget adjustment increases in the annual, I'm sorry, in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars for the. Calfire SRA fuel reduction project for the Pinehurst fuel break.
Meeting directors, the district's grant management policy authorizes the fire chief to accept no match fuel reduction funds for services up to two hundred thousand dollars and expend funds before appropriation by the board. No match fuel reduction funds accepted by the fire chief are to be presented to the board at the next board bidding for appropriation of the grant funds. In August twenty twenty one, Maraga Rinda Fire Protection District was contacted by Calfire Santa Clara Unit, advised that MOFD would receive two hundred thousand dollars. For hazardous fuel reduction in state responsibility areas. Fire chief has accepted these funds, the two hundred thousand dollar funds are in addition to the fifty thousand dollars the district was previously awarded. In February of twenty twenty one, the additional funds will be used to continue the Pinehurst fuel break located in a very high fire hazard severity zone in SRA. The fuel break work will be followed by pile burning to reduce collective fuel and set the stage for future understory broadcast burning. Between the area known as the tracks and Pinehurst east of driveway twenty four. There is no match for these funds and Calfire will reimburse MOFD for all costs associated with the project. The Pinehurst fuel break work began on September seventh, twenty twenty one, and pictures of the work are included in the fire prevention report at the end of this meeting.
Okay, so do we have any public comment on item eight point three?
We have two hands raised. Vincent Wells.
Welcome, Vince.
Is he on mute or something?
He is still muted, he, he, here he goes, he can now, he's unmuted.
Sorry about that, that was accidental. I don't have any comments, thank you.
Oh. Okay. Marcia?
Jonathan Goodwin.
Okay, Jonathan.
Okay, now I can unmute. So it's difficult to, you know, speak about this stuff critically without seeming dramatically. Ungrateful, you know, and I, I, so I want to say. Maybe not dramatically exactly, but upfront that, you know, any fuel reduction around here is great and I'm glad that's happening. And I also want to mention though that I had four points that I'm. Disappointed that there has been no community engagement with the community by the fire district. To talk about where this money is supposed to be spent in the SRA, well, that's. Where we live, I mean, that's everywhere, that's not just on the road, there are other places that might be of higher priority where people are more likely to get entrapped and die. And I think having a. Discussion about that would be. Salubrious for everybody. And it's also much more in keeping with the idea of a CWPP and more conducive to long term success, secondly. Well, I just said some of these funds could be used in, in other areas where people could be entrapped and I, I. I'll just repeat that because I've got it written out and because I think it's. Very important. So the third thing. What I don't understand, you know, if you're, if you're clearing out. This fuel along the road, why Canyon Road is not included in this evidently. Can the section of Canyon Road that is in the SRA. Is choked with fuel, it's in a dip where there's a ton of, you know, it's a riparian area, there's a ton of fuel there. It's, it's very heavily laden with, the car went off the road there today and you couldn't even see it. I mean, it's that thick and when that stuff dries out, even though it's a riparian area, when that dries out, it would be a tremendous. Impediment to ingress and egress if it were to ignite, and lastly. This is a question I really do want addressed. The area that's already been treated, it's been sort of being sort of finished up. Between Canyon Road and driveway twenty four, there are piles being made there ostensibly to burn, many of which are very heavily laden with poison oak. And I'm rather concerned about that because if that stuff goes into, if that's ignited and goes into the air, that's a problem. If it stays there and just decomposes, it's not a problem. I would like to know whether the. Fire district is very clear about whether there is poison oak and which, or some piles, there are some piles there aren't. Is the district really clear with the contractor that the, what poison oak looks like and that will, it will not be ignited, thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Any more public comment?
We do not have any more, more hands raised or received print public comments.
Okay, I'll close the public commentary. Do we have board questions or comments?
Yes, this is Director Dan Ziger. Actually, Jonathan brought up one of the points I, I. And I, and that I was going to make and I have a couple of questions, but one of them is. You know, I understand that there is a need to do this work in, 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 in the canyon area. But as Jonathan brought up, and I'd like to hear from the chief, and how's that determination made? Where the funds are used now, is it, is it strictly because it's evacuation, it's along the road or, you know, Jonathan was talking about. Going off the road, so I'd just like to hear a little about how, how, how the determination was made where to use the funding.
Certainly, sir, so everything is a, a. Is a series of compromises, the limited funds available, the restrictions on where we can and cannot do work, we're specifically barred from doing work in riparian areas as a result of SEQA, as an example. As well as the, the ease of the work in a particular area, obviously. Work and this is a series of trade offs, work closer to homes has greater benefit with regard to. to protecting lives and property in, in situ, as in residents in their homes will be better protected by work closer to their homes. On the other hand, residents flowing by a choke point or a particular area, while they are dynamic, which we recognized in the CWPP by producing risked prioritization and assessment maps for both live static and lives dynamic. Within live static, homes being used as a surrogate for lives and lives dynamic for access or proximity to evacuation routes for critical fuels being used as a surrogate. And so as we balance all these competing priorities with the limited funds available, we also have to look at ease of doing the work. Is there access to the area? Will it require a road closure? A road closure, partial or complete, as an example, can consume up to 30% of the project funds for traffic management. Obviously, those are funds that net no increase in fire safety because there are no fuels reduced with the expenditure of those funds. And then lastly, it, it ties in with, how does it, how does this project support the broader goal? And in this case, the broader goal that will be explained in item 8.4, the construction of a comprehensive network fuel reduction surrounding the district with a focus on keeping a fire out of our district or a fire emanating from our district out of the surrounding communities, while also making sure that we have proofed the lane, if you will, of protecting our evacuation routes. So, and then the last piece having to do with, with ease of work, anytime we are working with a single landowner, in this case, a single landowner that has a existing environmental impact report and existing habitat management or habitat conservation plan, then that greatly simplifies the work because there is only one access agreement to be received. There's existing SEQA and habitat management plan under which we can work. And there's a simplicity to that, and that simplicity is measured in both time and resources, and time being staff time and time being contracted time for which we, which we call, which we, for which we have to expend project funds that are not then spent on fuel reduction. The intent of the CWPP process and the stakeholder meetings and the public meetings that went along with that was to gain public input, which would then came to the board and to the board supervisors at the county level and to CAL FIRE for approval, so that we could operate underneath the overarching plan or priorities that were laid forth in the CWPP. There, there is always opportunity for increased public engagement and public input, and we certainly, we can always do better at that. I'd certainly be the first to acknowledge that we could do more in that space. But that engagement is we go beyond the CWPP and beyond the, the input that was received during that process. That also comes at the cost of time and money to, to organize and to execute those events. And on short notice, relatively small amounts of money. And I certainly don't want to, to talk down the value of a quarter million dollars. But in the fuel mitigation space in this area in this day and age, a quarter million dollars does not go very far. And so this area was selected based on its proximity to the critical evacuation route. The existing habitat management plan that allowed for work there, the initial entry that PG&E made three years ago, that set the stage for getting in there and the suitability of this parcel to long-term maintenance with relatively low cost, relatively simple prescribed fire as part of a future plan to extend this work along the tracks for the, the length of Pinehurst. And so it, it is seen as part of a broader push of how we can harden that, that single evacuation route for those, the members of the community of Canyon from a roadside start while also doing something acknowledging that it won't do as much going the other way, but also do as much as we can to prevent a fire that has begun in or around the community of Canyon or the power lines that transit through that area from that fire becoming established and spreading to the west into the neighboring community of Oakland.
Is, is, Chief, as moat, you alluded to PG&E, but is this PG&E? Is, is a lot of that property PG&E property or is it East Bay mud?
No, sir. PG&E only owns two parcels in the district, the two substations. It's all owned by East Bay mud.
East Bay mud, okay. And, and what about? So what about outreach to the community besides having this on the agenda here today? And, and, you know, I get all, I get the notices through, you know, Twitter and things like that. I haven't, I, I don't believe that I've seen anything about the work going on in the canyon area yet. Have we done?
Yes, we've been engaged since the beginning with the community of Canyon's representative. Okay, and engaged in explaining the project, making sure the project is communicated so residents there are aware of the planned and ongoing works.
Okay, thank you. And and, and what about, what about Jonathan's comment on, on poison oak? Could you, could you just address that at all?
Turn that over to the, the fire marshal.
Yeah, good evening, directors. I will work with the contractors to determine the amount of poison oak that are in those piles that they're making for us to burn.
Fair enough. Is poison oak something that's known that is a problem if you do burn it?
I am not aware of any research from air quality management, sir, on the burning of poison oak.
I, I, I know from, from experience, not from me, but a, a, a relative that if, if somebody is in the area and, you know, and poison oak is burning and you inhale it, it can affect you severely. But you'd have to be pretty close, you know. But, so it's worth looking into.
Yes, sir. I will.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Wait, I guess, I just, I think I have another question. Oh. So when the, when the burning actually occurs, will that get sent out to the, to the broader community? That burning is going on through news or other, other ways?
Yes, sir. As part of the permit process, we, we advertise it not only via our electronic and social media platform, but we put out placarding. And, and if there's a need for a road closure either due to smoke or fire apparatus activity, that, that's posted and coordinated well in advance as well.
Okay. Any estimate of how long the entire project will last?
Jeff, I'll hand you that one.
Directors, we've been working on the project this week and last week. I am waiting for the invoices from our contractors to see where we are and how much money we have remaining. I am guessing we probably have one more week worth of work to go before we expend the funds.
And, and does, Jeff, maybe you can answer this or Chief? Is it MOFD who actually does the burning when it comes down to burning?
Yes, sir. That's anytime we're, we're doing, we're putting fire on the ground, that's MOFD firefighters.
Okay. And that, that would be done by, like, on-duty staff?
On-duty or overtime on recall.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, any more questions from the board?
Just a quick announcement, I would like to note for the record that Director Bates has left the meeting.
Okay, thank you. So we're just barely down to a forum. So if there aren't any more questions, do I hear? Because you, you're asking for authorization for a general fund revenue and expenditure budget adjustment by $200,000. Do I hear a motion to that effect?
Either we adopt resolution, regular item 8.3. Second.
Okay, Marcia.
Director Dan Ziger.
Hi.
Director Jack.
Hi.
President Jorgens.
Hi. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, on to regular item 8.4, the CAL FIRE Tunnel East Bay Hills Fuel Break Grant Award in the amount of $6,380,563. Yay, so congratulations first off, Chief, before you get started.
Thank you, sir. The, the team put a lot of work in on this one. Directors, in May 2021, MOFD submitted two grants for CAL FIRE's California Climate Investment Fire Prevention Grant Program for consideration. Through the CCI Fire Prevention Grant Program, CAL FIRE aims to reduce the risk of wildland fires to capital structures and communities while maximizing carbon sequestration in healthy wildland habitats and minimizing the uncontrolled release of emissions emitted by wildfires. Qualifying projects, including those related to hazardous fuel reduction and removal of dead, dying or diseased trees, fire prevention planning and fire prevention education. On September 8th, 2021, staff received notification that the MOFD Tunnel East Bay Hills Fuel Break Grant was awarded in the amount of $6.3 million. The grant will include administration fee as well. The second grant submitted to help fund additional community chipping was not selected for funding. Staff will carry out the Tunnel East Bay Hills Fuel Break Project in coordination with MOFD's ongoing community education outreach efforts to aggressively reduce the risk of wildfire in the region. Working in a collaborative effort with MOFD staff and neighboring agencies, HOAs and community members, the project will result in the following outcomes. The reduction of biomass of woody and vegetative material available for combustion, significant reduction of probability of uncontrolled wildfires from starting or entering the East Bay Hills, increase the effectiveness of defensible space surrounding residential structures in the East Bay Hills area, decrease the amount of woody and vegetative material that is available for conversion to greenhouse gases by unplanned combustion processes through wildfire, and provide for a safer community. Of note, the, the correspondence we've received so far suggests that we will receive a contract within 30 days of September 8th. We do not have the contract in hand yet, and as a result, we don't know when the start date will be and what, if any, parameters will be attached to that contract. As that information comes in, we will certainly engage the board and the community. And as we work collaboratively with members of the community and the landowning partners on whose land we're going to be seeking the access agreements to do this work, we will provide updates. And then we intend to execute this project on a similar model to the North River Initiative Fuel Break. And with the exception of a, a small area that is essentially biologically off limits above El Toineal, this is intended to complete the, the exterior fuel break around the populated portions of the community as a pathway towards reducing not only our community's risk of receiving uncontrolled wildfire, but the potential for a wildfire emanating from the populated areas of the fire district into either surrounding watershed, other SRA lands or the communities of the East Bay Hills. This was a all-hands effort. I have a great deal of gratitude to all of the members of staff who contributed in the development of this, of this application and the experience and the prior relationships that were leveraged to ensure that the grant was written in a manner that resulted in it being favorably received. And we are tremendously grateful to our partners at CAL FIRE SCU, who unfortunately were unable to join us tonight due to commitment out of county on major fires. But their advocacy on our behalf and their support for our ongoing fuel mitigation efforts, specifically Fire Chief Jake Hess and Unit Forester Ed Ori. Without their support, this project, as with our previous project, one would not have been approved and two, we would be, we would be challenged to say the least to execute it without their support and without access to their deep reservoirs of experience in this particular area.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Chief. So not to downplay that, but we, the first thing we have to have is public comment.
Jonathan Goodwin.
Okay, Jonathan.
Good evening again. There's no picture showing the location of, I mean, I know where the tunnel is, but El Toineal is not on the tunnel. I wonder if the chief could give us a thousand words instead of the picture to describe where the area is.
I could, Kyle, with the important caveat that we don't know what is going to come in that contract and what of, which of the proposed work units will be approved? Also, given the funding amount is less than the full amount, which is, that we requested, which is standard for these sorts of things. We still have quite a bit of analysis to do once we receive the contract and we understand that the various parameters that come with it as, as far as final work units. As a general statement, the project is intended to run from the Arinda BART station to Cal Shakes, down the eastern side of Wilder, around Lost Valley, along the Indian Valley Corridor, Indian Valley Corridor around Sanders and out to Bolinger and St. Mary's. What is undetermined at this point is what parameters will come with the contracts I mentioned and the additional analysis after we have that contract in hand with regard to how far the allocated funds will go. That, that is likely to result in that line being moved around with the statement, with the general statement, however, that we are constrained by the work units as originally submitted. And we do have some pretty significant limitations as far as doing work that is not continuous with the originally proposed work units that I just described.
You might just need to say no, but can you, is it possible to say whether or not, or to what degree the Flicker Ridge project might stack up in that priority?
Flicker Ridge was included in a Forest Health Grant, which was not approved.
Oh, I thought, well, you said Indian Valley. What does that include then?
Not Flicker Ridge, the, from the, really from the PG&E lines north. The transmission.
On the Arinda side.
No, well, the Arinda-Maraga break right there. So where the, the transmission lines run along the north-facing slopes, so that the east-west transmission lines on the north-facing slopes of Flicker Ridge, from there to the, to the north towards the, sort of the Country Club Miramonte in, in that, that area. Obviously, the, the specifics of that still need to be worked out as far as where the actual work units are going to lay down.
And when will that be made? I mean, you just, will that be, will that be apparent in the short term or in the long term, or what's your timeframe?
Until we have the contract, I don't know. So when we receive the contract, we will know a lot more to include when the project can begin. And from there, the, the really, the detailed planning in pen can begin in earnest. Up until now, we're, we're simply speculating.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay, any more comments, Marcia?
We do not have any other hands raised or received public comments.
Okay, so I'll close the public comment. Board.
Congratulations on the grant for those who are involved in it. This is just a comment in terms, in the, there was a schedule for Ann in the earlier part of the agenda that showed the outstanding receivables, which I think is very helpful to monitor those at the board level as well as management. And I think there was about $900,000 that was still not been received on the previous billings.
So not the fuel break grant. All of that was received. All out receivables at this point are due to strike team assignments.
Right, I, I, I fail to acknowledge that. It's, I, I recognize different, but the impact of funding is, is the same in terms of the grant. Where the money goes out and then we get recovered later in terms of billing. I think it would be helpful on an ongoing basis to expand because of the size of this particular grant. Monitor that and modeling perhaps once we get more detail, you know, over the next month or two as it comes more finalized, when the, when the work's going to happen and the amounts, estimates in terms of how much we will have to carry for a period of time and the amount of money we may have to borrow under the TEATER Plan, particularly towards the end of this year, if any, a significant amount of the work is done in the current year. Because I think last year we did end up for a period of time of having to borrow not significant amounts, but nonetheless, we did have to, in order to fund it on the North River into Field Break and others, you know, the, the billings last year for the fire worker or firemen who were working outside the district. So I, you might just want to do that. I recognize it would be not totally the way it might turn out, but at least we need to monitor and know exactly how much we're going to be have to be borrowing if we do to fund it.
And I want to say thank you too. I, I know, you know, Fire Marshal Isaacs was obviously involved and Chief Quinnaker, and I'm sure, sure there were others involved in writing the grants and doing all the behind-the-scenes things that take a long time and, you know, relationships to build. And, and I know that another thing was that we, we got really good marks for the last project, or several projects, certainly the, the North River into Fuel Break that we managed showing, you know, giving updates and showing the before and after and making it very well organized and professionally executed. And I'm sure all of that led to, you know, this further money. This is real money for our community. I mean, this is a total of over $10 million that our, our fire district has received in the last three years. That's a lot of money for, you know, making it safer. So thank you.
Like, when I looked at the list of grants that were made this year, I think this was the second or third largest in the state.
Yes, sir. This, this is a big one.
Yeah, so it really does. Yeah, so it really does. Complement those who were involved in it in terms of the relationships they developed to. Bring it to pass. Credibility. Yeah, I would just like to add my congratulations also. This is a really big deal, like Craig said, at over ten million dollars, ten and a half million dollars to our district. On these grants, and I think this will go a long way to make our community safer. I think that, you know, once, once the public hears about this and, and, you know, this will be on our. Our agendas a lot more as we actually receive the contract and start moving forward. It's just, it's incredible and. Thank you to everybody who who made this happen for our community. And, yeah, they mean to be one of the, one of the seventeenth most critical projects in the state and. Thank you, Chief, and thank you all the staff who worked on this.
Okay, well, thank you, Chief. Thank you so much. And I think we all would love to have, you know, once you. Do have maps and fun things in the contracts and we're all set and ready to go, people, obviously, the public and the board will obviously care about. You know what the plan really is, and I'm sure it'll do a great job like you did last time of explaining it.
Yes, sir. We'll certainly work to get as much input as we can and implement as much of that and be as transparent. As we can. One of the real lessons learned from the North River Initiative Fuel Break was the. Was the value of that engagement and the payoff of the time that Jim Call and I spent going door to door on Bear Ridge as an example. And in this case, we now have a secret weapon that we did not have before in the form of the Fire Marshal. Whose previous work when he was at Land Use Planning and FRAP. Meant he knew all of the magic words that needed to be inserted and he knew the right phone of friends. To find out what the priorities had been on the the previous events and specific things such as what had been disqualifying elements. Of previous proposals from other agencies and ensure that we steer clear of those. Of those known no goes. So we are looking forward to running that same playbook with the addition, obviously, of a significant resource in the form of our Fire Marshal.
Right. Okay, thank you. That's a hard act to follow. So who's next? I guess it's regular. Nope, that's one more here. So committee reports, the audit committee.
Nothing to report.
Do any of our committees have anything to report?
Don't think so.
Okay, so let's go on with the thing after that. Any information on reports from anybody that spent money on the district's behalf? Okay, COVID's a wonderful thing for cleaning these up. Any informational comments from the board or the staff or questions?
I have one and I, I believe I know what the answer is going to be, but we had talked. At the last, I think, two meetings about resuming in-person meetings and. I was wondering if the chief is going to be addressing that at all.
Yes, sir. So there, we have been moving forward with the. Making sure that all of the systems and the procedures are in place so that if the the current direction to return to in-person or hybrid meetings, specifically a hybrid meeting. Whether if we arrive at the need to do that in October, staff will be well prepared to support that. Marcia has been doing excellent work putting all of that together, as I'm sure no one is surprised. While in-person meetings are relatively simple and we have largely figured out how to do remote meetings, virtual meetings are much harder and. She's run to ground all of the options. We have tested those options and determined that we are capable of supporting it. However, there is. Pending legislation with a urgency component to it that would allow. The continuation of virtual meetings. If that guidance is provided, we will certainly engage the board to determine the direction moving forward. But as of today, we are planning October. Being back in person with a hybrid option for public participation with the appropriate equipment and. Expertise, expert support available to ensure that runs seamlessly and members of the public are able to access the information either in person or virtually. Okay, thank you.
That's a good question. Thank you. Okay, on to. Chief updates.
Okay, thank you, Marcia. If we could put up the operations report pictures. And on this theory directors that I can say we have lots of people out doing lots of things, but the pictures tell the story. So first, this is a screenshot from the Alert Wildfire cameras in the round top area off Skyline. On September ninth, twenty twenty one, at approximately twenty hundred hours, crews from MOFD Oakland Fire, Contra Costa Fire Protection District, Cal Fire and East Bay Parks responded as a full vegetation alarm to report a vegetation fire. In the area of Grizzly Peak and Skyline Boulevard, resources from XCC Task Force Twenty Twenty Five, which was an OES prepositioned team. Put up by departments in the county and paid for by OES. Due to the high fire danger and and the weather conditions. Those folks responded as well, which is critical, adds critical weight to the initial attack, particularly in these outlying areas. Where all of those crews are being committed far from other response areas. Crews made an aggressive initial attack and contained the fire at approximately a half acre. That was a red flag day. There was a lightning and wind event forecast throughout the Bay Area. And we do want to highlight the importance of that prepositioned task force. Who provided additional bodies that and equipment that would not have otherwise been available. Next slide, please.
We know what started that fire?
So under investigation, sir, we have, we owe more answers on that. That is an area that. It's an interesting interface area between the two communities that does get a significant amount. Of both traffic on the road and foot traffic in the parks and on the. The Bay Ridge Trail that runs through that area. And so we're still working to determine the cause and then identify if there's any corrective measures in place. That is a very scary place for a fire to start. Due to access the proximity to isolated areas with limited evacuation and the heavy accumulations of combustive vegetation. So we continue to have folks deployed all over in support of the various. Wildland fire events. Here we have Engine Three Forty Five. They deployed on August twenty seventh. As part of a single increment resource to the Calder Fire. So this speaks to the level of drawdown statewide. Where rather than forming up in-county strike teams or either rainbow strike teams or task forces from various counties. We've now gotten to the point that when an engine becomes available. The incident requests them, they go to the incident, and then they are formed once they are at the incident. Into an incident-specific task force made up of a variety of engines from wherever they can get them. In this case, Jerry Lee, our very own Jerry Lee, was out as a task force leader. And you can see that that mixed crew on the left and you'll note the. The different types of pants are sort of the giveaway for all of the different agencies that come together on a task force such as this. Green for the feds. Yellow usually local government, then blue Cal Fire local government pants, but. A good experience, they were heavily engaged in the South Lake Tahoe area in point protection, structure defense. To including on the big day when fire came over Echo Summit was blowing by them on both sides. See them there drafting from Snap Tank up on the line. Just one more example of the the variety of things that folks do when they're out and about that. Drafting in municipal setting is a very big deal and an infrequently exercised skill. Drafting in a wildland setting is something you do all day, every day. It's a good opportunity for our folks to get out, get touches, integrate with folks from other agencies. And learn on someone else's fire. All those experiences, of course, come back to us. We also have folks currently out on the Dixie Fire as a GIS, a geographic information systems. And then other folks working in the plans section. Next slide, please. More pictures of folks out, strike teams of dozers. Those are typically, I think those are D sevens. But she, lots and lots of stuff. I had a day where I had a number of skidgens. Assigned to me. I'd encourage everyone to look that up, a piece of equipment you don't see in California very often. And we continue to see extreme fire behavior due to drought weakened vegetation. And just the extreme volatility of the fuels with record high energy release component scores. Next slide, please. Here's an example. This is a two mile long firing operation to tie off. A section of the Calder Fire that was moving towards Pollock Pines along Highway fifty on the the banks of the American River. Right where the Ice House Road takes off to the south. The thing I wanted to call out here is the way this firing operation is set up. There where the hose line is flaked out, there's about seven to eight feet of hand lined to bare mineral soil. And there's about thirty feet where it's been brushed. That is removal of ladder fuels and a reduction of the ground fuels. Fire was introduced. Along the edge of the bare mineral soil and allowed to burn back. To the left of the picture towards the main body of the fire to prevent that fire's westward movement. Next slide, please. And despite the clearance of ground fuels and all the preparatory action to remove the ladder fuels, things are so dry, the fire is still climbing those trees as you see in the center of the picture. And now these lines to hold to prevent the fire from climbing into the trees where isolated torching could loft embers across the line. Supporting these lines even with the favorable winds blowing the embers back onto the main body of fire. Is now requiring the plumbing of lines and aggressive wetting of those trees to keep the fire out of the trees. After having scraped bare mineral soil around their bases and after having eliminated ladder fuels through brushing and limbing. It's just a, it's a new level of fire behavior and it suggests the need for increased. Measures to prevent the spread of fire, both on wildfires and when we create our. Defensible space around homes and other values at risk. Next slide, please. And here's an example of that that same backfire, as I said, two miles long and those lights you see center on the hill was a spot fire that came over. And was picked up using a strike team of dozers in timber at night, which is a really complex operation. Just to give context, the construction of this line that we fired off took. About a hundred and fifty able-bodied firefighters and five dozers, thirty-six hours to build. Ten hours to fire and twelve hours to hold until things had calmed down enough where we put it into a patrol status. Next slide, please. And all of this was accessed at the base of the line via a tree that was dropped by hot shots across the South Fork of the American River. And all, all the resources going across to hold the line below the lower sections where bulldozers could not reach. Hazel Valley Road to the south were across that tree. That being used as a makeshift bridge over the river because the next access was approximately. Two thirds of a mile to the east and accessing along the riverbank wasn't possible because active fire was burning in that area. Next slide, please. This, just to give an idea of the scale, those are six foot humans there. You note the pile of hose exceeds them. This is hose that has been pulled off the line. This is far from all of it. And that hose is being rehabbed, rolled and put back out on the line because we're experiencing a shortage of hose. A wildland hose to fight fires because of the numbers of these incidents and their sizes. And the amount of hose that's being drained out of the caches. So just, I'm not capable of estimating how much hose is there, other than to say it is a lot. And I think that speaks to the the scale and the size of these fires. This is one zone of one fire. And a partial accounting of hose that had been already backhauled off the line with significantly more hose still deployed on the line. Next slide. Here's an example of where the fire was held along Highway fifty behind one of the the tracks of Forest Service cabins. And I did want to point this out because I believe it's relevant. To what we're doing here in the district with defensible space and the preparation residents make around their own homes in advance of a fire. So if you work from left to right, you see that bare mineral soil, the hand line once again, it's dug with a cup in this case so that you won't have a rollout. Or flaming material rolls across your line. And then we have a thinning. We see brush has been removed, cut down low and ground fuels have been taken back. And as we move back from the thinning, the the touch becomes less aggressive, less material has been removed the farther you move from the line. And we see where the fire was held there and that fire was held by a combination of the reduction of fuel. And then the introduction of water by firefighters. And it was the preparation, this work done in advance of the fire's arrival that allowed firefighters to plumb that line and to hold it. Had that work not been done, the fire would have just blown over the line. The firefighters would not have been able to hold it there. And the comment I make here and the observation that was hard to miss on a number of these occasions. Was with the limited resources available, a significant portion of those resources are being allocated to structure prep. In advance of the fire's arrival and structure prep is just a fancy word for the defensible space that is required by state law, in our case, by local ordinance. That had not been done in advance and had that work been done by the homeowners prior to the fire's arrival. Those resources would have been freed up to go fight the fire. And in some divisions, based on the possibility of available resources, the majority of assigned resources. Were tied down around structures, preparing them to receive fire. Leaving the main body of fire when it was not in proximity to those structures and other values at risk unchecked. Because we did not have the resources to go fight it. And it's just a call to action that if everybody does their defensible space work in advance. We can then free those firefighters up to aggressively fight the fire. And just like with a structure fire, the best way to save the home is to put the fire out. Best way to accomplish structure protection in this case is to prevent the fire from ever getting there. Next slide, please. And here we see another example where prep work has been done along a dozer line that was put through the timber. You see how the trees have been leaned up. The ground fuels have been brushed and thinned. The material that was there either chipped. Macerated or deposited on the opposite side of the line. And then this is plumbed, then as fire arrives, the firefighters with hose lines are able to stand and hold their ground because fire line intensities have dropped below the threshold. Where fire, where ground-based resources can fight them directly. So it was just, it was an observation. It was hard to miss. We were spending a lot of time prepping these lines to receive fire and that prep looked a lot like. The clearance of grass and annual weeds, the reduction of heavy concentrations of brush and the removal of ladder fuels on trees. That we require in the district and would encourage everyone to do is not only a best management practice, but a great way to ensure the survival. Of your lives and property that may be in that structure. Next slide, please. Here's yet another example, same thing plumbed, see how things have been removed, trimmed up, opened up as the fire comes through. The reduction, the fire line intensities are reduced and the firefighters are able to make a stand in those areas. Next slide, please. Okay, back in district, we had a event with a very scary location as far as a fire start. A very heads up play on the part of the crew. We've got Captain Mark McCullough who is on the call. Is going to give some particulars about the the event on Bear Creek, the wildfire and the timely use of a passing water tender to provide water supply.
Yes, sir. Thank you for welcoming back and everybody hear me. All right, great. Yeah, we were a victim of very fortunate circumstances in this event. One, not a lot of wind. Two. Not relatively low humidity. And three, as we passed this. You know, trucker going up the road, RBC at the time, Lucas Lambert. Was heads up enough to stop them as they were trying to pass the scene. And we were able to get water from them because as you can see in the picture, not that it doesn't much justice, but. The slope opposing us was very, very frightening for the citizens of North Arinda. Especially in up in the downs. I mean, that thing. If it had gone across that small ravine that you can see there. The slope opposing us was nothing that we could have ever stopped. So we were fortunate enough to have enough people there quick enough. To get water around that fire to prevent the spread of it and then deal with the car accident and car fire involved. So that's the good news. The bad news was it was a fatality fire. And I'm not going to go into the weeds on the logistics and politics that go into those types of fires, but needless to say, we were there for about seven hour. And due to respect of the victim's family, we're not going to go into details, but I will tell you that these are one of those fires that. You wish you could forget and no matter, no matter what you try to do, you just can't. And. It's a sad loss and I'm. You know, my heart goes out to the the victim's family. My heart goes out to my firefighter and who really was in deep with that. And luckily, he's been afforded some time off to go welcome a new baby. So hopefully his mind gets fresh and is able to come back. And do what he does best. But yeah, we were lucky on this one as we seem to keep being in this. In this community, which is crazy, but. The firefighters that we got there just in the nick of time. Were able to stop that thing from running that next hill and there's. The, I mean, the chief's better with words than I am, but there's no way we could have stopped it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Exactly to Captain McCullough's point, had that fire become established on the north facing slopes. Immediately adjacent to the scene. That that would be a very, very challenging to fire, stop, fire to stop short of Ladder Wasser Creek. We were able to get in touch with the couple that was driving the water tender. I will say nicest people you ever met. Be able to send them some recognition and appreciation of their support. It was almost like out of a cop movie with, hey, jump in and follow that car. Was a, give me that water. And they were, they were happy to do so and it was a very timely addition to our firefighting efforts. Having that water right there immediately available as crews rapidly made access down the slope, triaged. A fatality car accident over the side in. A fatality car accident over the side in rugged terrain and a spreading wildland fire. A lot of moving parts there, very heads up play with accessing the water. And immediately getting resources deployed where they could stop the fire before it became established on the opposite slope. Next slide, please. And lastly, we're, we're sad mourning the, the loss of Detective Mooney from Maraga PD. We were able to support that with an engine, a procession and a flag. We'd asked that everyone keep. Detective Mooney and his family and your thoughts for a tragic loss. It concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Then on to human resources, it looks like.
Incredible operations update. Thank you, Chief. And thank you to all the firefighters keeping all the California communities safe from wildfires and fire incidents in the community. Today, my brief, my HR updates brief. We had a vacancy that occurred in prevention. So we opened up a recruitment and we received 11 applications. Interviewed the top three candidates and we made a contingent offer which was accepted. And so that candidate is now in background and medical process. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. On to finance.
Good evening, directors. I have a brief finance report update. We'll start with the strike team reimbursement. And the strike team receivable update. For actual, our actual numbers for 2020, 2021, we do have a net receivable outstanding. For activity that year of $934,000. We receivable was 3.3 billion and we received 2.4 million in payments. And so we still have an outstanding $934,000. July has been a busy month for strike teams as the chief alluded to and based on F42s that I have received to date. It looks like so far our strike team receivable since July 1st is about $594,000. Those have not yet been processed obviously by OES. So we haven't received any payments. So the total outstanding receivable for 2021, 2020 through 20, year to date 2022 is about $1.5 million. Again, the 2021, 22 figures are just based off of F42s that I perceived. As of the time I did this report, we have 32 assignments since July 1st. With 223 person days on the strike teams. Next slide, please, Marcia. The other items that we're working on is we are part of the Mars system. Testing, which is an electronic F42 submission system where we will actually be able to submit our F42s. Electronically be able to check status updates and payment updates, which would be wonderful. So we are one of the districts that are testing it out. And it looks like it may be a year or so from actually being put into practice, but at least it's a step forward in not working with paper F42s. And also we're working obviously on the year end closing audit and we provided everything to the auditors and that's in process. And that's the end of my report.
I would just like to add before we move on, the Mars test and the digitation, digitizing of the F42s. We're talking a state level new electronic system, which is not easy. And it's a, it's quite a testament to Mary's efficiency and the, the working relationship she's established with folks at OES. That this district was selected to be one of the tests. So our hats off to Mary and we look forward to. Her inputs being part of the implementation of the Mars program, which will be a much better than the current system where we send things off. And at some point, six to 12 months later, a check shows up and this will be a significant upgrade from the current system. So thank you very much, Mary.
Congratulations. Okay, Fire Marshal Isaacs.
Hey, good evening, directors. We still are receiving a steady stream of complaints as you can see the dead tree complaints. 77 year to date, exterior hazard complaints, 177 today, property transfer. We've done 575 inspections, initial pass or 299 fails or 276. For our exterior hazard abatement inspections this year, we're up to 1,875 with 582 passing, 1293 failing. We have issued 39 pre citations. We've issued 321 notices to abate. We've taken three properties to. Abatement hearing and we've issued 36 citations.
So before we go all the way through, can we just ask a couple of questions? So when we have. The assessments and a whole, and you know, 1,293 people failed, but we only issued 321 notices to abate. What happens to the people? Who failed, but we don't issue a notice to?
We, we're still working through those, sir, to. Go back and do our second inspection and we'll issue the notice to abate if they haven't corrected the violations.
Yes, sir. But we also do expect to see a delta between those two numbers because we go out and do the assessment. And for some people, that is an education opportunity, which is why the fire code is designed to allow that additional 30 days. And a good number of people who have now been notified that they have work to do, roll the sleeves up and get the work done. So we, we will always see a significant delta between the initial fail and the notice to abate issues. And over time, we would love to see that number trend down. And over time, we would love to see, we would, we would recommend. Moving away from an assessment right to a notice to abate. As we get back into places where folks have been visited in private, in prior years. So they're aware of the requirement and the extra time is not being used. And, and that's a number we're watching very carefully. The ratio between assessments failed and notices to abate and then ultimately citations or pre lien hearings. We would like to see those tighten up as fewer people are waiting to be noticed before they begin the work.
So I just want to make sure I understand. So the process is you go out, you make an assessment. If they pass, life's good. If they fail, you give them, you give them a notice, but it's not called a notice to abate. You just give them a, a to do.
Correct. And that's a.
And then you go back and inspect it again. And if it didn't get done, then you give them the notice to abate.
Yes, sir. And then we go back and inspect it again. And if it's still not done, then we either send them a pre citation or we schedule them for a lien hearing.
Okay.
Which I should note, which is why we're still working through some of the properties that were inspected in early June, because the process is very lengthy.
Yep, okay.
Question on the properties transfer. I assume those are home sales or whatever it is or property sales.
Yes.
Yes.
And, and if, if they fail. What, what's the timeframe or how long does it take? Before the thing gets rectified so that the property sale clears?
I would defer to Jeff for a detailed answer. I'm not aware of any case. Where a property transfer inspection failure has resulted in a delay in the transfer of the real property. Primarily because that is a, a highly motivated property owner. Who is about to execute a very large dollar transaction. And with that, that appropriate motivation of wanting to clear the property so that the sale can go forward. Folks do some pretty remarkable things in hard.
Short time.
Timelines to get those properties into compliance.
Do we allow people, if, if, for example, you put your house on the market, it hasn't sold yet. You just put it on the market. And, and these days, that's a close approximation in timeless to the time. Do we allow people to kind of pre do it instead of actually waiting until you've got a contract?
Yes, sir. The, the, a certificate of compliance is good. Jeff, is it, it's six months, correct?
Yes, sir.
So a certificate of compliance is good for six months. So if you had. If you've done the work and self-reported or we came out and did an inspection and gave you, you're good to go. Within six months of, of that, of that good to go, the property can be sold with no additional requirements.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry, Jeff, I interrupted you.
Oh, that's okay, sir. As I said, we've moved three properties to abatement hearings. One of those properties self-corrected after that hearing. Two of the properties did not. I worked with members of Mr. Holtzman's team. We secured trespass warrants to go on to the property because the property owners would not grant us access to the property. We executed those two warrants today. So work began today on those two properties and the goal is to have that completed by Friday afternoon. Chipping, we haven't been doing any.
Hey, Jeff, hold on, Jeff, just one question. Cause somebody asked me this question. I'm just going to ask you while you're there. When, when we get those, those warrants that we can go on the property. Do, do we get law, law enforcement go with us initially?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. That's all.
Okay. Chipping, six, seven days, year to date, approximately 309 tons. Have not done. Any chipping since we're focused heavily on the inspection and enforcement. Plan review is steady.
So have we been, has the city of Arinda been doing any chipping that we organize?
Measure Our Chipper has been operating five days a week. We've been coordinating that, scheduled, receiving the requests, scheduling the work. For residents in the city of Arinda.
And they've been busy, it sounds like.
Yes, sir. And on the days, on the days that there has not been demand for the service, they've been working on city owned properties.
And, and we don't, we don't track that. How much tonnage is there is taken from that?
There's, we're waiting for the city of Arinda to come up on the collector app, which would allow. Those crews to report their progress in the same manner our crews are.
Okay.
Wow.
We remain steady on the plan reviews, directors. Current projects. We have our chipper ordered, working still on the chip truck inspections and follow up. Working on the Pinehurst Fuel Brake, as I said earlier. Worked this last, this week and the week before, anticipate one additional week. Worked on the warrants and the district funded abatement work. Plans for the quarter is to absolutely get prepped for the tunnel East Bay Hills Grant, waiting for the paperwork and the contract. From CalFire so we can start the formal planning process on that. And I'm also working with our fuels mitigation staff, trying to do some training for them. Bring some of our contacts in from Sequoia, some of their biologists. And to teach our staff about the different tree species, plant species in our area. What's native, what's non-native, what is. Receptive to fire and what resists fire. Just more education for those folks that they can pass on to the citizens that they engage with every day. That's all I have for my report. Are there any questions from the directors I could answer?
When do you expect to get to complete the purchase of the chipper and the truck?
Chipper's already purchased. We're expecting delivery in November. Still working on the truck with the chip shortage due to COVID. It has been extremely challenging. Trying to get the trucks that we want and that we need to adequately do, you know, pull that chipper and everything. So. Still fingers crossed that we're going to get that accomplished here very shortly.
Great.
Hey, Jeff, you had an item on here that says state mandated inspections. And, and could, could you just, because I'm not, I'm not familiar with. These type of codes. Can you just go down with the E, R2 and B are?
Yes, sir. So the office of the state fire marshal mandates that. Certain occupancies are inspected every year. So an E occupancy is a school. So we're mandated. To inspect every private and public school at least once a year. Our two occupancies are hotels, apartments. Places like that that were mandated to inspect. And then we have B occupancies or just our regular businesses. That we do spot checks on.
And, and so, so just going back to that, for the E's, which are schools. I, I mean, school started, you know, within the last few weeks. Are we planning on doing those like soon?
We are just finishing up. For the year. And I don't like to do them in the summertime when the students aren't there because. The hazard's not present. So the students are back in the classroom. And you know, the lower grades where the teachers put all the material on the wall, you can only have 50% of your wall space covered. So not be the grinch, but that's when we really can have an effect on the schools and the safety. And it's just K through 12, director, that mandated to inspect.
And, and so am I, am I assuming that in the October report is going to show something there for E occupancy?
Yes, sir. I, we should have some re inspections should show up in that.
And it, those include all schools, like private schools as well?
Yes, sir. Private and public.
Also, like preschools?
No, just K through 12, sir.
So, so yeah, let me just ask you that question. How about where, where does pre, the preschools do not get inspected?
They are not mandated. By the office of the state fire marshal, depending on. Where they're being held, if it's a private residence, if it's a, at a church. Or another type of occupancy or facility, when they apply for their licensing, we go in and we do. The actual inspection, but it's not a yearly mandated one.
So it's an inspection as a business?
Yes, sir.
So, so, so as a policy. We, we do not go in on a yearly basis and inspect the preschool then?
That is correct, sir.
Okay.
Okay. I guess we're on to the, thank you. Fire Marshal Isaacs, that's great. Next we go on to the Fire Adaptive Community Ambassador Program.
Good evening, directors. Last month, the director asked for an update on the FATCA program. We've been running that program for several months now. Our initial plan was to run it as a limited pilot. We had not done this before, nor had participants. So we ran it for a while, sent out an invite to the, the folks who had attended the training. Gathered them. Jeff and I listened to, to an hour of their feedback. Took several pages of notes. They now know, as we told them, they now know much more about this program than we do. The results were, were overwhelmingly, yes, we need to continue doing this. Yes, it's been a good experience. We have. A resident of Sanders Ranch by the name of Tom, who's done 170 some odd. Assessments with his neighbors and said it's, it has become a form of therapy. Where he, he's able to go out and he, he meets people. He's able to share some good information. And I would suspect he is probably one of the best assessors of fire risk in the district, just based on the volume of the folks he's contacted. So we're taking their feedback. We're refining that. We will be scheduling additional training opportunities and. Trying to pull in those folks who have been doing it to act as trainers and mentors now that they know so much about the program. They've got some requests for additional material that can be distributed. We're working to, to provide that. And then will be the next step in the, in the program as we move towards formalizing it and making it more permanent. Is that up until now, because we hadn't done it before, because these are volunteers who didn't fully understand what they were volunteering for, because it had not been done before. Heretofore, we haven't been doing any advertising of the, the capability. So it was. Hey, folks who are participating in the program, talk to your friends and neighbors, work your HOA mailing list, talk to the folks in your Firewise group or at a swim meet or wherever else. That you're comfortable doing and, and then let's, let's gather some information. One of the feedback items from them was that they were ready, especially with an expansion of the program. To begin having the district offer as a filter that is requests for assessments are received, we can forward those off. To the FATCA group and then they will identify who's, you know, who's in the area, who has the capacity, who has the interest. And, and start picking up additional assessments beyond the ones that they're self generating. So positive feedback, been a great experience for the program so far. Full disclosure, we, we received two complaints over the course of a thousand some odd interactions. Those were both addressed with regard to what was the scope, assessment versus inspection. With the, the common denominator between those two, being clear, these are assessments. And this is sharing of best management practices and good ideas and education about the fire code. Not enforcement, which obviously is a fire district domain. We've been trying very carefully to keep those, those two separate and distinct. So good feedback. We're tremendously grateful to the participants for the work they have, have done to do this proof of concept and their willingness to step into something new and unknown. And their willingness to spend their time helping to spread. Fire safety information to their friends and neighbors. So we look forward to expanding this and it's been a, it's been a very positive experience for us and it sounds like for the participants as well.
Awesome. I'm glad it works. Okay, thank you. So I guess now we are on to communications received.
You have a. Public comments, sir.
Oh, sorry.
Typically the public comment opens at the end of all announcements or we can open it.
Oh, let's open it now while it's currently, I guess, what the heck.
Jonathan Goodman.
Good evening, once more. I've got a question for the Fire Marshal, a question for the Fire Chief.
Uh, good evening once more. I've got a question for the Fire Marshal, a question for the Fire Chief, uh, for the Fire Marshal, uh, that the, um, the businesses and the schools and the multiple residences also caught my eye. I realize you have, have a lot going on. Um, but it brought to mind, uh, years ago, um, a new fire, uh, prevention team came in and found out that those, that those inspections hadn't been done for many years. So I just, just want to pass that on saying it's easy apparently to, um, let that slide a little too far. Uh, so I guess that's not really a question, but, uh, a comment. And for the Fire Chief, oh, no, I did have a question there about how the tons of material, chipped material are, are, um, are measured. I mean, you know, do you go out there with a scale and, and, I mean, you judge by the, how much volume is in the truck, but you know, what you do when you broadcast chips? Is it sort of a by the seat of the pants calculation?
Yes, sir. It's an estimation based on si, on cube and type of material. Um, we've been working on a prototype idea to, to use a strain to, um, gauge on a deflector on the end of the chute that would give, uh, same thing they use on combines, um, to, to calculate how much grain has been processed. Uh, but currently it's, it's based on the, um, the operator's estimation of the size of potential weight of the pile.
Okay. Um, then lastly, um, about that fire on Grizzly Peak, I happened to be listening to the dispatch of that and heard, uh, CDF Battalion 1616 say, oh, I, I couldn't hear a lot of what he said, but I did hear him say twice, all you're getting is me and an engine, uh, which seemed to indicate to me, uh, the way I read that was that there's a big drawdown going on for obvious reasons and that there's far fewer resources available for, uh, wildland firefighting now available to the district. So there's two, two, two parts to this. One, I just want to say that the, uh, you know, recognition of the chief's efforts in all of the burning he's been doing. That, uh, if, if crews, Delta crews or, you know, whatever camp crews are, are no longer available to do the mop up, uh, heretofore, the, the, you know, urban firefighting crews did not have the background in dealing with that sort of thing. And now they do. So that's, that's really a, a big plus in this circumstance. But my, my question to the chief is to what degree that you can, you know, verbalize, are we further imperiled by, by the current drawdown? If a fire were to happen in, um, you know, a place like Bolinger Canyon, let's just pick one. Uh, how much less resource is available to, uh, to do, to, uh, to fight that fire?
Um, so the, the answer to that question is, a- as you may guess, is it depends. Uh, CalFire has significantly more resources as do local government, uh, than they did ha, than they had in years past. Uh, the challenge of course is that the demand for those resources has gone up as well due to drought and record low fuel moisture levels. So on that particular day, CalFire had upstaffed additional units. Um, however, those units were already committed, um, to other events, uh, in the region. And so what we're getting is what we're getting. And that's really one of the, the elements, uh, that the OES preposition task force and strike teams are designed to, um, to address is that since we have multiple shifts and, um, we have the ability to recall off-duty folks, we're relying more on local government, um, upstaffing via recall of off-duty personnel, uh, than we are on, uh, on CalFire crews because of the, the size of the, the geographic area they're committed to. And the net simple, the number of fires they're experiencing. And with regard to, to overhaul and, and backhaul, you're absolutely correct. Uh, the camp crews, um, for our purposes are non-existent, both for, uh, fuel mitigation projects and for response. Um, there are very few of them and they're quickly deployed. CalFire is, um, backfilling to a degree with CalFire hand crews and, uh, now with, um, National Guard hand crews. But there are not nearly as many of those as there were of the camp crews. Um, they don't have the same availability. Uh, and, and that reliable just up the road resource that we counted on for years is, is simply no longer there. Uh, the golf crews are, are few and far between. When you get one on a major fire, that you count yourself lucky. Uh, there, there's a real paucity of in-state, um, hand crews and an increase in out-of-state contracted resources on the major fires, but obviously that doesn't help us in, in the local government arena, particularly here where we're going to see a short duration, high intensity, fast-moving wind-driven fire.
But what that really highlights is the importance of prevention because as much as we can have, you know, great, wonderfully trained, terrific firefighters, when they're off, when the whole place is on fire, the only way to protect yourself is with prevention and they were doing all that, you know, open, clear space that you need to have, the defensible space around your house. That's really, really important. And that only started about three and a half years ago when our new chief sir showed up.
Thanks, sir. I just caveat I'd add there is that, you know, the, the prevention work really sets the stage for a point from which the, the firefighting resource is limited, uh, as they may be, can anchor. And they have a place they can anchor and fight from. Yes, sir.
Right. But you gotta, you gotta have a place.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any more communications received?
No communications received.
Okay. Uh, future agenda items. Okay, none of those. So I guess we already opened it up to public comment. We haven't covered anything since then. So there must not be any of that. Um, so do I hear a motion to adjourn?
It will be adjourned.
Second.
Okay, Marcia.
Director Danziger.
Hi.
Director Jex.
Hi.
President Gorgons.
Hi. And again, thank you all for joining us and thanks especially for the, uh, the great work on the fires you, you, you and your team have been working on and for the, giving that terrific grant.
Thanks, sir. All right. Stay safe. Bye.
Bye.